Good evening, and welcome everyone to the June 21st, 2023 Yarmouth Planning Board Meeting. I am Joan Crowley, Chair of the Planning Board. This is to formally advise that as required by Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 30A, Paragraphs 18 to 25, and pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021, and an Act relative to extending certain state of emergency accommodations, signed into law on June 16th, 2021. The Yarmouth Planning Board will hold a public meeting on June 21st, 2023, at 5:30 PM. The public is welcome to attend in person this evening or via alternative public access, provided in the notice of meeting available on the town website. I will begin by taking roll call. Susan Britta.
Here.
Will Rubenstein. Jim Saban.
Present.
Peter Slovac.
Here.
Ken Smith.
Here.
Chris Vincent.
Walking down the hall right now.
Walking down the hall. Present. Joan Crowley, present. Seeing that we have a quorum, I would like to now call the meeting to order, and I would ask you to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. First item on our agenda this evening is a Nantucket Sound Group, NSG, Mata Kizit Village LLC 40B proposal for property on Route 28. Mass Housing has notified the Town of Yarmouth of the receipt of an application for site approval for 23 units of rental housing, which is proposed to be developed under Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40B. Mass Housing is soliciting input from the Town of Yarmouth and local boards, like the Planning Board, on any issues that may be raised or are anticipated in the town's future review of the project through the comprehensive permit process. I understand there are representatives here from the Nantucket Sound Group. I would like you to introduce yourselves, if you wouldn't mind. Come to the microphones. Thank you.
Brian Bragginton-Smith with the Nantucket Sound Group and Autonomous C.R.A.
And Paul Cleary with the Nantucket Sound Group, and also Autonomous. And then Tom Rowan, who would normally be with us tonight, he's sick. He's a little bit under the weather, so he's a no-show tonight, but Tom is kind of our managing partner on the Nantucket Sound Group project.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for joining us this evening. Kathy Williams, Town Planner, will now review with us the status of this project as far as our review, and she has prepared for our discussion a draft comment letter to the Board of Selectmen related to this proposed unit, Chapter 40B Housing, at 897 Route 28, formerly a laundromat, that your group has submitted directly to Mass Housing. And I say that, the word "directly" is important here. So, I'd like Kathy to run through, she's prepared a draft memo for us, but maybe Kathy, you could run through everything that's happened so far that maybe you, I think Mr. Vincent has been involved in some reviews as well, so maybe you can bring us up, all of us up to date on where we are, and then we can solicit comments from the Board with regard to the memo for the Board of Selectmen.
When Mass Housing received the application, as Duran said, they sent out a letter to the municipality saying, "We've received this application, and we're looking for any comments the town," or "local boards," which the Planning Board is one of them, "would like to solicit." So in order to garner that input, we have had multiple different types of committee meetings, kind of in a, somewhat of an informal manner, but Community Housing Committee, the Affordable Housing Trust has met. We had a site visit with Mass Housing, and some representatives from the Planning Board were in attendance, Peter Slovac and Jim Saban, as well as representatives from Community Housing Committee and staff as well, just to get a better idea of the project, and also to kind of hear some input from Mass Housing as well. We also gave a tour before the meeting of the two affordable housing projects that are in town, the Yarmouth Gardens and also Yarmouth Commons, to kind of give them an idea of, this is a thing, kind of architecturally and design-wise, that the town might be, might be looking for. We also did have a site plan review meeting, which is basically made up of all the different staff departments to kind of review an application and provide, in an informal manner, some comments for the applicant. And then we also had the Design Review Committee meeting yesterday, where they also reviewed it and provided some general comments. When I say "general comments" and "informal," the application is not something that's developed to the point where we would normally even be reviewing it. We wouldn't normally be going to design review or site plan review with the level of detail in the application, but Mass Housing did ask for some input from the town, so we wanted to meet and offer that input.
Okay. I'd like, all of us have received a packet of information. Kathy took excerpts from the actual application, which is 237 pages long.
Seventy-two.
Sorry. And the most relevant ones. Some of you may have seen the actual application online that she shared with us. Much of it is boilerplate, obviously, that Mass Housing requires. Others were documents such as the item that went to our town meeting, the DIF agreement with regard to our wastewater proposal on Route 28, that was approved at town meeting. And I would, I would just ask for any comment from, or questions that the Board might want to ask while the developers are here with us. Kathy?
Can I just, I just wanted to also point out that all of this information is being solicited to be given to the Board of Selectmen, who would be the ones who would actually be compiling the letter with any attachments that would then go to Mass Housing. Right now, I believe they still have it on their agenda for the 27th. The comment period had originally been through June 30th. We did receive an extension through July 20th, so I don't know, that might give the Board of Selectmen an opportunity to talk about it over multiple meetings, but I think they're looking for some initial input from various departments and staffs for their meeting on the 27th.
Okay. Before we start though, Kathy, I would, could you just run through your memo, very briefly, for the Board's edification and for the public who might be listening, in terms of your initial thoughts on this?
Yeah, I think, I think one of the things that we need to emphasize is Mass Housing is all about housing. So they want to provide, you know, affordable housing, rental housing, housing in general for the communities, and they're using Mass General Law, Chapter 40B, which is a state law that allows developers, who are, they're required to have 25% capital A affordable for their units, but they also get some relief with regard to zoning. They might have a higher density, they might be able to be a little closer to the buffers and that type of thing that might be required under, under our general zoning bylaw. So what we're trying to do is provide what might be something that could be a condition that they might include in their project approval letter that we would like to see, and I think you see some of the things in the memo here. But what we're really highlighting in the Planning Board's memo, I think each committee kind of has a different thing that they might be highlighting. Design Review Committee is somewhat similar to the Planning Board, because they were talking about the aesthetics, the Cape Cod style, the buffers, how it's laid out on the site. But in your letter, we're kind of talking about all the, all the effort that has gone into improving Route 28, all the different planning efforts that have gone into the fact that we do have the Opportunity Zone, we do have the Growth Incentive Zone, we have successfully approved for funding Phase 1 of our sewer system, which will run along Route 28, right, right in front of this property, and then, of course, the adoption of the Village Center overlay district zoning, which really kind of emphasizes what the town is really looking for in this section of Route 28. The project is located in the Village Center 3, or VC, VC3. And then it also talks about the other efforts that the town is working on in the memo here, about the Mass Works grant for streetscape improvements. Not only are we looking for private investment, but we also, that public investment, well, the streetscape looks like the public realm really makes, makes a place as well. And also submission of a community planning grant to help identify, you know, some different ways we can encourage mixed use. I think we've all seen and had heard some concerns from people about maybe Route 28 is getting too heavily residential, and we don't want to lose our commercial corridor. So this study, this grant application for a study is really, what can we do to incentivize mixed use? What are some of the barriers to mixed use, and how can we help facilitate development of mixed use in our community? And then it just outlines, you know, some, some three conditions that it might be considered in, to be included as a condition, mainly following the VCOD zoning as closely as possible? I'm sorry, show this for everyone. I'm at the bottom. You know, because of VCO, they talks about density, dimensions, setbacks, unit sizes, where you can locate your parking, all the things that make a project look, look nice. And also whatever they can do to meet the architectural and site design standards as well, because they help identify, again, aesthetically pleasing development in our community. And these are, these are documents that are in effect right now, so that this is a very clear vision or outline of what the town's looking for in our community. And then trying to include mixed use in the development for job creation and to retain that valuable and limited commercial corridor that we have, and also to increase our commercial tax base. So these are some ideas that I thought maybe the Planning Board might want to hit on. It's obviously up to you, you know, what other...
Yeah, okay. So let's begin with any, any questions the Planning Board members might have with the applicants. Any comments on the application materials?
Everybody's waiting to go first.
Saban?
So I'll go, everybody's looking at these, I'll go first.
You started off, Jim. Thank you.
So I just want to point out a couple of interesting things. In the known variance request for 401 4.5.2, just as a point of inference, because we're talking about square footages of accessory apartment units, this is a little bit of an interesting thing, that 400 square foot for a studio, 700 for a one-bedroom, and 900 square foot for a two-bedroom. So just as a reference as to what we're talking about with regards to accessory apartments, kind of a general idea of where we're at there. I had expressed at the site visit, some of my concerns to the, to the applicants. My main thing is, as you know, that tree in the front, and it's really not just about the tree, it's about the aesthetics of Route 28. I think we talked a little bit about the presentation that you had, where there was a fence in the front, and I can't probably emphasize enough, a deep desire to maintain the Cape Cod character and not the Charleston character of Yarmouth. But the other question I have is...
Just to add to what Jim said, is that if you see we have the original building, I know it's hard to see from here, but the original building on our design is right up here, set up on, on the sidewalk. Beautiful tree here at, at this corner of Pine Grove and 28, and a couple of nice trees. Like, there are, there are nice trees, we all agreed on that at the visit there. And if you see where we have the pins set up right now, after last week's meetings and yesterday's meetings, we're kind of at the draw, you know, back to the drawing board of trying, not trying, we will situate the building to fall into that minimum setback of 15 feet and maximum setback of 25. So we'll find somewhere in that Village Center setback, and we'll reposition. And we were attempting to maintain the original building because we were trying to balance both the housing application, Mass Housing, and the mixed use by retaining that building. After the last, you know, half a dozen meetings, we're, we're going to go back and knock down that original building and use the opportunity to properly cite the building that, that, and we hope when we do that, that's, we hope, that Mass Housing will let us use somewhere between 2,000 and 3,000 of that first floor for mixed use, because we're in agreement that we would like to see smart growth villages, that are these walkable communities that have the mixed use. But not all the state policy lines up for this integrated, even though they've been talking about it for 20 years, their policies and their funding don't necessarily line up for mixed use. But I think we push that, push that approach and maintain that tree line on 28, because that, that will become, I know it's not the exact entry point to the VC3, but it can be a great entry point into that neighborhood as a gateway into this, into the development of this neighborhood. So that's, we heard, you know, at the site visit, Jim.
Great, I appreciate that. Coincidentally, I think 20-something years ago when I was a Selectman, we had the Yarmouth Economic Revitalization Committee, who actually had a plan to put more trees along Route 28. And so the idea of taking trees off of 28 takes away from some of the, the beauty of, particularly those, those trees. The second is, I understand the challenges of funding when it comes to mixed use. Banks or some type want you to try to separate the two issues, so, you know, I appreciate the efforts to try to do that. It's important to us to try to create that walking village concept, and with some of the other properties that are in the area, we want to try to continue to pursue that with part of our plans as a community. And, and we are a little bit, I don't want to, I'm not sure what the word I want to use, but hesitant to turn Route 28 into a residential corridor. So the mixed use part of this is quite important. Yep. That's all I have, Matt.
Thank you. Ms. Britta?
Just a couple of observations, and then some questions. I, as one Board member, do not want to give the impression that if you save a tree, as Mr. Saban suggested, that this is a great project.
You don't suggest that.
No, no, I think, and I like, and I love trees, I'm with you on that. I don't, I think if a tree comes down, it should be replaced.
I suggest saving a tree is a great idea.
It is a great idea.
Has nothing to do with the project.
In any event, I want to shift the conversation a little to Route 28 and the work that virtually everyone in town hall has been trying to do for the past 20 years to upgrade and have a presentable, more presentable Route 28. When we entered into the process of wastewater funding, financing was a major issue, and Rich, when he was here, put together a program, residents, businesses, and one of the big components of the businesses was economic development on Route 28, that there was an expectation that a certain amount of revenue was going to come out of economic, economic development on Route 28. Because if we don't get that economic development, those of you sitting in the audience and the rest of us up here on the day, as, as the residents, are going to pick up that delta, and we're going to pick up the shortfall. So I am dedicated to economic development along Route 28, quality economic development along Route 28, not housing. We are, we have two fairly large housing projects on 28. I am loath to think that there would be another one, even, even with the possibility that it's mixed use, and it is not, it's not a guarantee, as you even said, there's no guarantee that Mass Housing can allow you to put mixed use in that site. So I am very concerned that, that, that there would be another housing project that this town would think is a great idea to be along Route 28. We have worked, Kathy has worked very hard, we've all worked, the Village overlays, the visioning statement, for those of you that participated in the visioning statement over the past two years, there was not a session that people did not talk about Route 28, and how it looked, and what we needed to do. I never heard one person say, not once, in all the groups that I managed, "Let's put more housing on Route 28." So that's my, my, no matter what you do, and I don't even think it looks that great, but even if it looked fabulous, no matter what you do, I think it's a bad idea. It is not consistent with the visioning statement, it's not consistent, I think, with the growth pattern that this town needs to sustain the obligations it's committed to with the wastewater project. So that's my personal opinion. The one question I have is, why did you go directly to Mass Housing and not come to the town first?
We have, in, in other meetings, talked with the town. Why we went to Mass Housing is because it's a more consistent path for state aid. We've talked about the LIP. The LIP is Low Income Housing Tax Credit. The two projects that have been built are Low Income Housing Tax Credit, Financing Stack...
So it's about money?
No, we're going to Mass Housing, because we're doing market, we're, we're doing workforce housing.
But it's housing.
Well, you can't have, you can't have economic development without employees, and part of employees is workforce housing.
I totally agree.
So it's, what, I'm not in dis, I'm not in disagreement with you saying, we're trying to find the balancing act, and what I'm, what I'm trying to define in my thought process is, how do we address the VC3, where we're looking for the year-round family-oriented activities? So my, this one parcel isn't going to address that. The larger Village Center, what is going to be in that Village Center? And you can't just have these one-and-dones that are just, just housing. So we're, we're, I totally get what, what you're saying, and when I use smart growth, it's talking about these walkable villages that are anchored by economic development, and that, I think, has also come up in the various meetings we've had of, how do we, how do we find that, what, what...
Totally agree with you, but it's anchored in the term "economic development."
Yes, I...
We've been looking at Great Island now for, what, a decade? That's a perfect opportunity for the walkable sort of idea, and nothing has happened there. And particularly when you have said that there is no guarantee that Mass Housing is going to let you set aside any of these, any of this land or any of this project to generate economic development. So I am stuck on the economic development side. I think the town needs it, we need the revenue definitely for the waste, to fund the waste, and we don't need more housing on Route 28.
And we'll give you just a shot, you know, kind of how we've been thinking, and Brian, this has been a 25-year exercise, as Brian tries to think through, through these issues in Yarmouth also, you know, he's, he's a card-carrying member of, you know, how do we, how do we do it different, and how do we sustain this economic development pot? As we were leaving that laundromat that went to, it went to bankruptcy, it went to foreclosure, it just ran out of steam, what, you know, whatever, right? We had designed what we've called the Oyster Bar, basically farm-to-table on the oysters, because the oysters, the pot of cleaning up the wastewater in the embayment issues, and we saw that as a, as a component of economic development. And I would say the pushback from the Oyster Bar is like, why would you want to put in, put an Oyster Bar here? We already have too many restaurants, and we have, already have too many economic, you know, employment issues. So like, our goal is to find the mix that works, Susan. I, we don't have the, we don't, a part of it is workforce...
Well, if you, if you're looking to find the mix, good luck, but I still think the town should be extremely skeptical about taking another several acres off Route 28.
Well, this is one acre.
Well, and, well, all right, one acre, even one acre.
Right.
Even one acre.
Yeah.
Is, is, it's inconsistent with the vision, it's inconsistent with what I certainly think we should be doing for Route 28. And that's, that's my opinion. I mean, I, I'm not even mild about the design. I would have been a little more sensitive if it looked fabulous, but it doesn't.
Right, it doesn't yet.
So, in any event, I think that, as I said, I'd like to shift the conversation a little to what we had planned for 28. I think this is inconsistent with it. I think it is, again, slippery slope. We have a plan, we should be, not a plan, but we have a vision, we should be sticking to it, unless, you know, we get knocked off it.
But as that, as that definition of economic development, what, I've asked from the Planning Board as a whole, what would you see as a key driver on Route 28 for economic development?
You know, I think every person on this board would have a different definition of that, of a different definition of driver. My vision, of course, is quality development. I think if the place looked great, if we had quality development on 28, we would get more people. We would get a reason for people to come to Yarmouth. As Jim has said multiple times, he's sick of seeing people drive through Yarmouth to go someplace else. We want them to stop in Yarmouth. And there's not many places that would get them to stop in Yarmouth. I think Captain Parkers and a few others, certainly Nick's place, but there's not many others. And that's why we need a holistic, comprehensive plan from, you know, the Hyannis border to Bass River. And there's a general concept of, you know, we want economic development. How we refine that takes more than this board, it takes a lot, a lot of expertise. But you don't cherry pick, and that's, I think this is sort of a cherry-picking idea, we're going to take just this one acre, and let's work this. I'm not willing to go along with that at this point, so.
Yep.
I appreciate your question, Mr. Cleary.
And thank you very much. I was, that's helpful.
I'd like to just get back on topic, because we could be here all night talking about our views on economic development in all areas of town, not just 28. I'd like to get back to the project, which I'm not even sure what the project is now. You know, the documents I had read, I received just recently, is not what you're showing me tonight, but I do have comments on what you did give us, and I want to engage the other members of the Board, so that you can get maybe some general comments on the concept and the idea. So, Mr. Smith or Mr. Slovac?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I'll just jump in, and I'm not going to continue down the, the complete path that Susan was going, but I certainly do have concerns about additional housing development on Route 28, in all can do. I mean, I know, we, I think we all, as a board, agree that redevelopment on 28 is necessary, commercial redevelopment is a must. I do, along with, I believe, Susan and Mr. Saban, do have concerns about additional housing going up on Route 28. I know that, you know, you touched on it, workforce housing is a priority, we need it, I don't disagree with it. I just have concerns that is Route 28 the right spot for it?
Mr. Slovac, anything?
Does, I understand the plan's going to change, but the, the plan in our package shows parking on the adjacent properties, so do you still need to...
Yeah, so we have parking on the property, and then the Village Center bylaw calls for incorporating centralized parking facilities and allowing shared parking. So we have had conversations with neighbors about how might a shared parking and how might a centralized parking facility work? So that is not in the, the plan, so we have a, we have a shortage of, of parking for that mixed-use site.
So that would be in agreement with a, with a budding property owner, an easement or, or some use agreement or something?
Yes.
License and parking.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Is this project, is it financially feasible without Mass Housing? Can you do it without that?
I don't think any of these projects are financially feasible on 28, even with the wastewater coming in. You need federal, and you need state help and aid for the projects on 28. There's been, there's been, again, coming back to economic development, the reason we're stressed at economic development right now is because we've had inadequate infrastructure, and I'm not just talking about Yarmouth at this point in time, I'm just talking Bonstable County as a whole. We've had inadequate infrastructure, so that's now put this constraint on where do we go next with, with investment? And most of the financial markets have been scared off the Cape, starting with when Brian dragged them all down here with, for Cape Wind. Like, they just don't see the consistency of the marketplace for investment, you know, like, this, we didn't just dream up this project at this particular location, you know, a month ago and send it in. These designs and thoughts are 10 years in the making, and it's a leveraging of infrastructure, energy and water nexus of the investment that is coming to Nantucket Sound with the wind, and the investment that is coming to Bonstable County with the solar. That's the leverage opportunity to create the next generation of businesses that are tied to the technology of clean energy. So the current administration's focus is climate, which we have a big problem with climate down here, we're sitting out here, you know, where storms can impact us, climate and clean energy, and then their second priority is affordable and abundant housing. And I don't look at affordable housing as affordable... And I don't look at affordable housing as affordable housing. That's, it's, what is the cost of living in the community that I live in? And I have to solve for lowering the overall operating costs of the neighborhood I'm trying to help redevelop by bringing costs down and bringing investment money in. So the feds are in a position where they want to help. The state is in the position where they want to help. That's what the Mass Works grant is, is about. So every little piece of federal and state help we can get will then circle back and stimulate more investment because now people are showing that there is this joint exercise going on that's leading to this, this support of redevelopment. I know in New York, I know in Boston, they don't believe people support redevelopment on Cape Cod and in Bonestable County. But you just keep plugging away, plugging away, plugging away, like all these boards have done for 20 years. And then sooner or later, you're an overnight success.
Thank you.
Okay. I just have a couple of, of questions, and it relates, you know, our agenda tonight is to comment on what you submitted.
Yes.
So I, I had some real concerns about the quality of it, quite frankly. I see numbers all over the place. I see catalog cuts. I see various pulls from some, some architectural document or some solar document. And quite frankly, was very disappointed in it. You have cat, is it, is it going to, is it a prefab construction? That's what you presented.
Well.
The stacks.
Yeah, our prefab comes in, is that we have technology software that allows us to stack the financials together.
I'm not talking about capital stacking.
It's the same thing. Once I'm done, I have mechanical, electrical and plumbing designs inside that, which is the key part of getting to the budget of any project that you're going to build. Typically, what you see is people come in with pretty pictures like they did down at, and I'm, what's the name of that project down at, near the gas station on 28?
J-Mart.
Huh?
The J-Mart project.
No, I'm talking about the one that didn't get built, that's.
The J-Mart one.
The road project?
The J-Mart.
The aisles or whatever, the intersection down.
Great Island Plaza?
Is that what, that Great Island Plaza, right?
Is that one?
So you, so you can get through a lot of things with pretty pictures, but are the economics of the mechanical and the electrical and the plumbing and the framing, does that actually work? So when we do things modulally, that's how we, that's how we do the modular. So we can, we can decide on, are we making all three bedrooms, two bedrooms, one bedroom?
I appreciate the.
And then we can build them modular, or we can build them by frame.
Sounds like a smart idea.
Okay.
But your application has one bedrooms as, just use studios.
Yeah.
In your application, your application to ma, to mass housing, you have, that your studio apartments will be 522 square feet. Your catalog cuts from stacks have it at 504. Your one bedrooms, in your application, they could be three different sizes. You've got 741 square feet, 646 square feet and 764 square feet. Your catalog cuts, 690, 578, 638, 579, 724. None of them match. And the one that is the three-bedroom is the one you'd be going for the variance, it looks like, because that's under 1,200 square feet. I've said this before, and I apologize to my fellow board members, I've been a public servant my, my whole life. If I had received this application at mass housing, I would have sent it back to you. But I guess they can't. Catalog cuts with inconsistent numbers, your applications have got studios, one bedrooms, three bedroom, all different square footages, I don't know what I'm looking at. And now I get, I guess I'm looking at something different. So my, my concern is, we need to be on record. Our, our mission tonight, the outcome that I would like to have, is that we transmit a letter to the board so that the Board of Selectmen can be on record about this project. And we're, please don't take my criticism as not liking the project, I want to see what comes out from your further thinking on this, but please, I would, I would ask that you do a slightly better job on the quality. Because people like me and members of this board take time to go through 272 pages of an application. And members of our staff have spent time going through 272 pages of an application. And when we, when it's a moving target, it feels like a bit of a waste of time. So we don't want to waste your time anymore, so please don't waste ours. We need to be on record, it's important that the Board of Selectmen is on record, Back to Mass Health, they started the clock, and we now have to respond. And I would ask that the members of the board consider this memo that Kathy has drafted for us so that we're on record as planning board, Back to the Board of Selectmen with regard to our comments. I'm okay with the, with the body of it, basically, but I would like to suggest a final couple of sentences reflecting my comments right now. And they would be that as a final note, the planning board would like to express their disappointment at the quality of the application submitted, which included many inconsistencies and did not present a clearly defined project. Furthermore, at our meeting on June 21st, we learned that the project presented in the application is not the project that's planned. So that would be my suggestion on the memo to the board because that's the outcome we're looking for here. We're looking as to whether or not we want to send this letter, first of all. And then if, in fact, any of you would like to offer any other suggested changes to the, to the note, to the board. Any other comments on that? Yes, Susan?
I certainly think we should, hey, you know, on the, you've got a great paragraph about all the things that we've done. I think the lead-in sentence, or we should say someplace, that the board has serious concerns about additional housing on 28, implying it's inconsistent with not only what we viewed for, but certainly inconsistent with the opinions that were voiced during the vision statement.
I, I can't.
Is that too broad?
Yeah, because we have a VCOD, which includes housing. It's in VCOD 3.
Or zoning allows it.
Zoning allows housing in that district.
Another, another example of the law of unintended consequences, but regardless, I still think we should say something about the board's concern about additional housing, even if it's allowed in the VCOD. Additional housing on Route 28.
Do you want to emphasize multi-use? Because is it just, is it, you don't want any housing on Route 28? Or are we talking about the fact that we don't want housing overtaking?
Let's find out what the board thinks. Chris, Mr. Vincent?
How do we express that?
Just two brief comments. I'm going to say that I understand why this plan is the way it is. You don't come into a board when you first start now with a complete plan because that's just not the way it's done. You come in with a general idea of what you want, you get to see the, the board's opinion, then you go back and you make the tweaks, and then you present the final plan. So whether it's 504 square feet, or they say 500 square feet, they're not trying to throw shade on us. It's just, that's the nature of a, of a project. So, so I'm okay with that. They're not trying to slide something by us because that, that wouldn't happen. They'd have to go through the, the proper procedure to get what they want anyways. I was instrumentally getting this VCOD passed, I worked, spent a lot of time on it. My feeling is that I'd like to see it adhere as closely to the VCOD as possible. I know that we had housing in there because we wanted housing, we wanted mixed use. And we also knew at that time that there was nothing we could do to stop a 40B because that's just the way it is. So if they want to shove it on us, that's just the way that it is. You know, we prefer that that's not, and we'd like to see it with the VCOD. So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else?
Well, before you wrap up, I'd just like to add to, because again, great comments. What Chris just said, we're not, we're not trying to throw anything by anybody, and we're not trying to jam anything down anybody's throat. So that the little movement and tweaks, as Chris just said, that's our attempt of hearing from the boards and working with the town and finding a way to make a project that everybody is happy, is happy with. And we're going to continue to work that process, and I know it feels like there's a gun to your head by the state. We're not in a hurry. We bought that property in January of 2019 because of all the work that you've all done there. So we want to get the right answer, not just jamming it somewhere down, you know, like earlier in another meeting I was in.
I think we understand that.
We're not here trying to chew and screw like most, you know, greedy developers do. We want to participate in the revitalization and the reinvestment into the town of Yarmouth.
I, I appreciate that, and we welcome your, your, the time that you've spent on it and the money you've already spent on it. But unfortunately, you know, the trigger has been pulled because of the direct application. And now we're sitting here having to react to that.
Yes.
Unfortunately. But you, you're in control of the pace of the project. We are not. So again, the outcome I'm hoping for tonight is that we get something to the Board of Selectmen that we can all agree on. Susan, I'd like to table the discussion about how the board feels about housing on 28.
I was, he asked the question.
No, I understand. Oh, he asked about economic development. I'd like to, I'd like to table that because it get, it's.
Right, I agree.
It's going to get in the way of the letter.
I agree.
And that's, I hate to be.
Fine, table it.
Mr. Saban?
Madam Chair, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, thank you for your due diligence. I, I must admit that I have been very busy with trying to plan something that's kind of kept me from spending.
On the road.
The, the amount of time that you have, and I appreciate your efforts in that, that regard. And it does bring to, to point some concerns about what we're supporting. I'm not really sure anymore. I thought I had a really good idea, but when you came today, now you're talking about tearing down the laundry building, which I'm not opposed to, and moving things and redesigning things. So I'm concerned that, I'm not sure what I'm saying I, I agree to. I agree to the concept. So that, that's, and they know, and I'll point out that, for those that don't know, Mr. Ruin and Mr. Bragton Smith are lifelong Yarmouth residents. These are not people who are coming to town, they're from outside. These are our local people who are trying to do a good thing in our community, and they have lived here forever, so they're, they have skin in the game. But quite frankly, I don't know what it is I'm trying to say yes or no to, because as we've talked, a lot of stuff has changed through the presentation. So I don't know much, how much more time we have. I don't know if they can go back to the drawing board and kind of clean up some of this stuff and come back, or if we've got to do something today, I'm.
Kathy, yes?
My only comment was, and maybe people can tell me if I'm wrong, but the memo isn't really saying you support anything or, or don't support anything. Alls you're saying is you support all of the hard work and you want to see them following the VCOD zoning as closely as possible, providing aesthetically pleasing and cohesive building design and site layout that meets the VCOD design standards and site and building strategies, and includes mixed use in the development for job creation and to retain the availability of a limited. These are just, in a sense, your vision for Route 28 that you want them to kind of adhere to, because this is what's been codified year after year through all of the zoning and the various initiatives, which are spelled out here earlier. So I don't think it's basically saying we're supporting or not supporting, it's just saying when you continue to refine this project, these are things that we would like to be incorporated into it. And possibly maybe even having mass housing, you know, put these as conditions in, in their letter of approval.
With that, any other comments on the le, is that help, does that help, Jim? I think so. Yeah, we're, we're not saying yes or no, or we like it or we don't.
Can't.
We just said we can't. We don't know what it is. But we do know what the application said. And again, it's important that we emphasize whatever the next project, whatever you bring back, we're going to come back with those same comments about VCOD 3, the three, the three items that Kathy has identified. So those aren't going to go away. And, and so I, I just need to get a sense from the board if, if we want to go ahead with the, with the letter, with the, with the final statement or not. If you're not comfortable with the final statement and we just want to be on record saying, look, these are the things we, we really want you to pay attention to, that's fine too. So if someone would like to make a motion, one way or another.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Could we edit it and then, when do we have to get this done?
Yeah, you asked that question, Jim, I'm sorry. Kathy, does this need to be done tonight?
My understanding from some of the emails that came by is they're, they're trying, they, the assistant town administrators, trying, and Karen Green are trying to compile the, the information that's been developed so far based on what was actually submitted to present to them on the January, January, look at that, June 27th meeting, knowing that, you know, there may be some questions that the board has or some clarifications that they're looking for, so they might have another time, I think on January 11th, in order to look at it again so that they can submit the, the final comments by the 20th, by January 20th.
January would be better.
Would they say?
January would be better, but go.
I don't even know what day of the week it is, let alone the month. What year is it? 2012? Okay.
Planning board, it must be Wednesday.
Sorry. Thank you, thank you. I need, I need the directive.
You guys.
So not January, everybody, July.
I can, I can make a motion on my suggested change, and we can vote on that. Is that all right? Or no?
I would like to see a draft, another, I mean, incorporating your comments.
Okay.
And maybe a sentence or two about although the VCOD allows this, the board remains concerned about the economic impact. I'd like to see more of a tie to our obligation to pay for wastewater, which will include something that's developed on that site. I think that's a very viable, and I think we should mention it. I don't know how we word that, even though the VCOD does allow for housing, the board does remain concerned about the impact that will have on, on financing the wastewater program. And that is a real concern.
I, can I, can I just say? A lot of the financing for the sewer is, is being done through the new growth revenue. And the new growth revenue isn't just on commercial development, it's not like on, just on an office building. You're creating a new residential building, that's increasing the value on that property. You're going to get new growth. And 75% or, maybe it's 100%, can't remember, I think 100% of that new growth goes towards the sewer.
Right.
So it doesn't matter what the building is. It doesn't matter whether it's housing or whether it's, it's economic, you know, offices or a restaurant or, or a hotel.
It'll, it's all based on the assessed value, the new assessed value.
New assessed value, right.
Right, yeah, thank you.
So that new growth would go towards septic, uh, searing or other?
Still applies.
No matter what.
Yeah. Regardless of what they build there.
I just think you also want to think about what, mass housing isn't going to want to hear that you don't want to have housing on Route 28. They're all about housing.
But you're right, they probably don't want to hear that, but you're right.
You can't just now change the game. You've developed the VCOD, it's been approved by the voters, we can't all of a sudden say we don't want that. Maybe you beef up, you know, include, because one of the comments is include mixed use in the development for job creation and to retain the availability of a limited commercial corridor and increase commercial tax growth. Do you want to expand upon that? Because I think it's in, I guess my point is, I think it's in there with regard to the fact that we don't want it to be all residential. Because we're promoting the mixed use, because that's what VC3 does, promotes the mixed use.
That's what the VCOD was all about.
Right.
But since that, since we did VCOD, we've had the obligation to pay for wastewater. So we have to collapse that into that conversation too.
But we understood, again, as one of the people that spent a lot of time on the VCOD, it was written with the knowledge that searing was the thing that was going to make the VCOD possible in 20 to 30 years. This wasn't something we always said was going to happen overnight, it's going to be a long-term process. And development of wastewater is a thing that's going to help eventually get VCO 1, 2, 3 up and going. Well, of course we hope, that's why we do it.
Do we want to send a letter tonight? I think, I think, I think we, we can wait if the board, if, if it's not required until...
I just don't know whether they were looking for something.
Get this going and done.
Well, I just don't know whether they were looking, they being the Board of Selectmen or the town administrator's office was looking for some input from the planning board. So at least the Board of Selectmen understands where they're coming from. I, I guess I don't, I'm unclear on what edits would be made other than your two additional sentences at the end. So I would need more clarity on what edits you would be looking for. And if you're clear on the edits, we can just acknowledge that we're going to add those and submit them. Is there more? and submit them. Is there more, is there, I guess, a particular reason to delay?
Any other specific comments on the letter as it's written?
Um.
Okay. Let me just repeat the sentence that I had suggested, and so everyone can understand it. And I, I did write it down, Kathy, somewhere.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it.
As a final note, the planning board would like to express their disappointment at the quality of the application submitted, which included many inconsistencies and did not present a clearly defined project. Furthermore, at our meeting on June 21st, we learned that the project presented in the application is not the project that seems to be planned. Any comments? Mr. Vincent?
I don't, I don't think it's necessary.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's have a motion then.
On the addition, on your language?
Whatever you want.
I think it is good.
Okay. Well, let, well, let's make a motion on that. I may have a motion to submit the memo as amended to the Board of Selectmen related to a proposed 23-unit Chapter 40B housing project at 897 Route 28, submitted to mass housing by Nantucket Sound Group, NSG Maticus, Cassett Village LLC.
So moved.
Do a roll call. Oh, yeah, we need a second.
Second.
Who, who made the motion?
I did.
Chair.
Okay.
The chair made the motion.
Oh, no. I take that back.
I think the chair does not.
Susan, Susan made the motion. I apologize. Do we have a second?
So what does that mean?
I mean, someone might
Then we have the original motion.
Madam Chair, I'd make a motion that we accept the memorandum as written
Yep.
With regards to the issue of affordable housing. I think we pretty much addressed the issue of mixed use on item three. You know, our bylaw suggests that housing is part of it. So we'd be contradicting ourselves by saying we're not in favor of housing when we've for years built it into our bylaw. So I would make the motion that we accept the memorandum as written and submit that to the Board of Selectmen.
I'll second that.
Roll call. Mr. Saban?
Aye.
Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
No.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Slovec?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay. Thank you very much for coming. We appreciate it.
Thank you so much for having us send.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Really enjoyed it. Thank you.
Along with your tour.
You're the first one.
We appreciate your efforts. Continue them.
I'd like to make a minor adjustment to the order of the agenda by moving up the Riverwalk Park item to be next. If that's okay with everybody. So Riverwalk Park, Boardwalk and Events Space, DRI exemption. Included in our packets is a support letter to the Cape Cod Commission for Development of Regional Impact exemption request being made for Riverwalk Park, the Riverwalk Park project. Kathy's got a memo that she's prepared for us, that she would like to have us send in support of the project. Kathy, want to run through?
Sure. We already have received one from CEDC supporting the DRI exemption request. And we also, I got to find out whether it was approved on the consent agenda from the Board of Selectmen last night, because they also had one as well. But I think everyone knows the, the Riverwalk Park. I'm not going to go into a lot of detail. Because the project is located in environmental justice neighborhood, it is automatically through the MEPA process required. In addition to an expanded environmental notification form, it also required a single environmental impact report. And whenever you have an impact report required, it's a mandatory Cape Cod Commission DRI. Wouldn't normally have triggered anything that would have required going to the Cape Cod Commission. So what we're hoping to do is to submit an exemption. We're basically saying we're not having any significant impacts outside of our, of our community. And that's kind of what this memo is, kind of highlighting some of the points that I thought the planning board, you know, the visioning and how it's going to be beneficial to the environmental justice neighborhood and that type of thing.
Any comments, suggestions from the board?
Do you want a motion?
I've got one here. May I have a motion to submit a letter of support to the Cape Cod Commission for Development of Regional Impact, DRI exemption request being made for the Riverwalk Park project?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Saban?
Most definitely aye.
And Mr. Vincent?
Aye.
Ms. Britta?
Aye.
Mr. Smith?
Aye.
Mr. Slovec?
Aye.
And I am also in favor.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the item, on our agenda is temporary seasonal employee housing, again, in our packets. Kathy has provided a memo to us summarizing some recent discussions that she and I and Building Commissioner Mark Grills have had, and continuing discussions with the Chamber of Commerce. Kathy, want to you walk us through
Sure.
That, that memo for possible special zoning, possible zoning amendments to the particular bylaw?
I think the board's fairly familiar with, with what has been happening. In 2022, we obviously expanded the definition of seasonal employee housing in motels in order to allow non-motel employees, as long as they were employed within the town of Yarmouth, or the town of Yarmouth businesses, actually. We've had a couple motels along Route 28 that have received a special permit from the ZBA for 50% and another one for 100% of their motel to be used for seasonal employee housing. The Village Green Motel, which is located in the HMOD II but has an underlying residential zoning district, did apply for 100% seasonal employee housing, but encountered strong resistance from the neighborhood and ultimately withdrew their special permit request. So as part of that, there were some concerns from, I think, the Zoning Board of Appeals of being kind of put into that particular position. So maybe we should be looking at some tweaks that might help the ZBA in their future deliberations on this particular issue. And there's some items that are mentioned here with regard to basically eliminating the special permit option for hotels in HMOD II, basically so they would just be limited to the 15%. And if they wanted more than 15%, that would end up being a variance, which would be much more difficult versus a special permit. When we had the conversation with the chamber, they were, they did note that there are some motels in that HMOD II that do use the 15%. So they wouldn't want to have the, have it be a no entirely within the HMOD II. But they were, I think, in full support of not having it being anything beyond that in the HMOD II. So that would basically be leaving the seasonal employee housing to more than 15% through special permit only on Route 28. Maybe considering setting some additional special permit criteria, or possibly some provisions for the ZBA to base their decision upon. I haven't given a lot of thought of what some of those might be. But we say you have to have a code of conduct. Maybe we provide some additional information. Or it's a special permit criteria, say, shall demonstrate to the board that you have provided adequate provisions for code of conduct. So that, some of the other applications that we've seen, they have provided code of conduct saying, you know, quiet hours start at 10. And they also have, you know, overnight security and a bunch of other things that we could either codify or basically say, you need to demonstrate to the ZBA that you're adhering to, to these things. And so that you can essentially be good neighbors. Maintain your business, maintain your property, and be, be a good neighbor. And there was also a discussion as to whether, and this was a comment from the chamber, on whether the planning board would like to increase the percentage along Route 28 from more than 15% to be, in a sense, a permit through the Building Commissioner. If you're meeting all the provisions and you're 15% of your rooms, you can go directly to the Building Commissioner with all that information and get a permit. So is, is there any interest from the board to maybe increasing that so there's less, maybe somebody could do 20% or 25% of their rooms, should they so choose, without having to go to the Zoning Board of Appeals? It would be something where they still need to meet all the provisions and they could get a special permit, not a special permit, a permit just from Mark. You may recall that when we started this seasonal employee housing in motels, it was all special permit. And then after we saw that people were regularly meeting these things with regard to the 15%, we converted that to being an annual permit. So it's not a one-time thing. It's an annual permit through, through the Building Department. Do we, do we want to have any interest in increasing the minimum hours of people work for a Yarmouth business? Right now it's set at 24. Maybe 30 might be more appropriate, just to make sure that we're not attracting non-Yarmouth businesses to house their people in, in the town of Yarmouth. And then also consider maybe allowing special permits to be issued for up to two years if the motel was run successfully using the one-year special permit. We know that Parker's River Resort was very successful their first year. They came back. So every year they seem to have to come back, because it's an annual permit, to the, to the Zoning Board of Appeals. So it might maybe be a consideration of, the board didn't want to increase it beyond one year, the ZBA, without some type of codification in, in the zoning. So we could simply say, the first time, everyone's always limited to a one year. But after that, if you've demonstrated the first year that you've done a good job, maybe they could allow for two years. The other component is, we did have a very detailed email exchange with Town Council on whether motels are required to pay the motel excise tax for rooms used as seasonal employee housing. I think we had always been under the impression, yeah, that, and, and even some of the motel owners in the, said that, oh, we're going to pay it. We're going to pay it. But there is, there are exemptions from Mass General Law, Chapter 64G, under Section 2, that specifically exempts lodging accommodations provided to seasonal employees by employers. I had a long conversation with Town Council about who's the employer. And I learned a little bit about legal law and how they make their legal opinions. But briefly, Town Council's opinion was that the exemption would apply to our bylaw because the state law does not specifically state who the employer is. And you can't read into that. You can't assign things to that. I even asked if he could contact the Department of Revenue and can get, see if they have any insights on this. And he did. And they have stated that they are not taking any public position on this question. So Town Council did indicate that although we cannot collect the room tax, we could impose a reasonable fee for the permit. So that might be a way of getting around, okay, you're not paying your excise tax, but we don't want to lose that income that's coming to the town, which is for our, 75% of that goes to wastewater. We don't want to lose that. So maybe it'd be a case of trying to identify a reasonable fee for that. Obviously, any fee changes need to go through the Board of Selectmen, get their approval, have the whole public hearing process. So it's not like we can just say we want to charge X amount. It's something that would have to go through, through the Board of Selectmen. We did talk about with Town Council, different ways of limiting the total number of motel rooms in town that might be used, so that we don't become the, you know, a place where other communities are having their seasonal employee housing. He didn't really feel that that's something that would be appropriate to do through zoning. He did talk about maybe having another type of general bylaw that's having some type of annual licensing or renewal process with the Board of Selectmen, or the Board of Health, similar to the tobacco license or the alcohol licenses. My only concern is it's just another layer for businesses to have to go through. It might be, just might be too cumbersome for that. So we, and I guess the last part of this is, we are also hoping, and we can talk about it more, having, scheduling that joint meeting between the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board, to get some more direct input from them on maybe some of these ideas, how things have been going for the seasonal employee housing, and whether they had some other suggestions that might make some sense.
So we, we have here five suggestions. Maybe some of you have others. Before Kathy begins to craft anything for an amendment, I'd like to get the board's sense about these, or some we should not consider at all. They're off the table. We wouldn't, we wouldn't think of, of one at all. And the converse of that is what's missing. And a lot of this may be better, we probably will be better informed when we do meet with the ZBA to get their sense. I mean, they, they're in this business. And they, they have a better sense of what these special permit requests are like. So, so maybe we just go through them one by one?
Sure.
Kathy, on the first one, HMOD remains as it is at 15%. HMOD II. And that we would, which is what we're doing now, retain special permit options for others other than the HMOD II.
Kathy, can you just, what is, tell me again, the HMOD, what are the parameters of that district?
It's basically all the motel properties on South Shore Drive.
South Shore Drive, okay.
It's not like a full, connected.
Any, any comments on that? We included to start. Mr. Saban?
Madam Chair, I, I appreciate what we're about to do. However, is it my understanding that these suggestions are coming from, I think at our last meeting, somebody commented it was the Chamber of Commerce. Somebody is suggesting that we start looking at this issue of seasonal housing outside of this group. Am I correct?
Yes and no. Go ahead, Kathy.
I would just say, I think it's a case of the Zoning Board of Appeals looking for some additional guidance. When they had the meeting for the Village Green, I think there's some neighbors here this evening, they were adamantly against having any, this type of seasonal employee housing in what is really an underlying residential zoning district, even though that motel happens to be in the HMOD II. So I, I feel like maybe this is simply a conversation with the ZBA before we do anything, and just say, do you think that would help? Would that be more comfortable? But I have heard, you know, some people in the ZBA saying they're more comfortable with it being on Route 28.
So I guess my, my question is, is there a working group that, you know, I've heard there's people that are concerned and want to address, and I think last week somebody said chamber, wants to address this issue. So I'm looking at this issue the same way we're looking at accessory apartments. And we're demanding, well, let me rephrase that. We have a deep desire to have listening sessions over housing and apartments. And now we're talking about making changes to seasonal housing, some of which I'm very much for and some of which I have questions. But why are we trying to make decisions without hearing the pros and cons from those that are trying to solicit these changes? I guess is where I'm at. I, I want to be educated as to why they think we should do this versus why we should not, so that I can then tell you, or the members of this board, that yes, I support this. So the changes of 15% to by right or special permit, I'd like to hear the arguments for those. I, I wasn't involved in, in this process when they put the special, the seasonal housing bylaws in place. I'm in favor of trying to amend them to make them more workable for our business community. I have some concerns. Certainly one of my concerns is, is about telling people where they can work. I don't want to do that. But again, I would like to hear, so that we don't go through this again and say, hey, you know, wait a minute, timeout, let's go through this again, like we just went through with the accessory apartment buildings. So in other words, I'm trying to say is, can we hear some from what other people's pros and cons are about this that are, I know there's some discussion somewhere that, can we drag those people out?
I think it's the Zoning Board of Appeals is where you want to hear. And maybe it's my misinterpretation of their concerns of looking, not wanting to legislate these things and having more guidance from the planning board through the zoning bylaw. And maybe we just hear more about it when we, when we meet with them.
Well, that part I understand. But my question's about things that they're not willing to change, like 15%. Is there a movement to make everything by right? Are there discussions?
The chamber was obviously interested in making things
By right.
Either a higher percentage, or more by right at a higher percentage. That doesn't mean you have to go along with it. It's just
I'm not suggesting we do or we don't. I just suggest that if there are, there are underlying discussions about seasonal workforce housing, then maybe we should try to, rather than try to tweak this and then have them come back to us and say, you know, I'd really like to have done this instead of that, based upon just what we're hearing from the ZBA and not people who are actually going to implement the changes that we're going to put into place. I'd like to hear from them. And, and obviously the people in the community. Matter of fact, I see we have some tonight that, that have concerns about
You will, you will. Don't worry.
That have concerns about whether we increase or decrease. So I think there's a, kind of a process I'd like to go through.
Okay.
If I may.
Also, ma'am.
Mr. Vincent?
Me, me too. I'm not ready to decide anything tonight. I need to, to think about this. But my, my initial reaction is, are we trying to fix something here that's not broken because we've had it into place? And we haven't had any complaints or any problems, as far as I know of, that no one has come before the board to complain about anything. So I, like Jim said, I like to know where these are coming from, how they're being promulgated to us. I like to think about them. The only one thing I can say is that, if that's true, that they had said, yeah, we're going to pay our fees, and then they decided, no, we're not going to pay our fees. Well, I got a pro- I got a problem with that, for sure, and would do anything we can to make sure that we, we do get, get those appropriate fees. But I'm not ready to make any decisions tonight, I still need to think about this, hear a lot more from the ZBA about how the process has gone.
Okay, Susan?
And through Jim's suggestion and Chris's support, through these sessions, maybe we could develop a seasonal housing policy, which we do not have. We are developing policy through zoning amendments, and that is not the way to do this. We should have a policy governing, or at least outlining, what our policy is and how we're going to house our seasonal workers. This is the third time that the suggestions have come before the planning board in three years, is it past two years I know we've done amendments?
It's just 2022.
Didn't we do something last year?
2022.
22.
Oh, that was last year, okay, but wasn't there something?
There's one Kathy there, Susan.
Do something earlier, like in 2019 or something to?
I think that might have been, I can't remember if it was 2019, but at some point we took it from being all special permit to.
Right, maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
It was before 2019, because I was still running hotels in Yarmouth at the time, so.
But at the basis, we don't have a policy, we really don't have any guidelines, and maybe.
Mean by a policy?
We don't, there should be a statement or, or something that articulates how the town intends, or wants to, or is driving to, or is trying to set up a housing policy for some, for seasonal workers. Right now, that policy is being set up through zoning amendments. The, you know, the problem seems to be, every time someone says, I don't like that, someone says, change the zoning, it's a zoning problem. That's not really the problem, the problem is we don't have a uniform approach to how we're going to house our summer employees, ranging from, you know, a whole bunch of conversations, and I know there's been talk about maybe doing a dormitory kind of thing someplace. We need, maybe through these listening sessions, figure out how we're going to state, how we're going to, because this is a problem that all towns on the Cape have, but we seem to be obsessed with it. We're always talking about summer employees, and the answer is change the zoning. I don't think that's the answer. I think we need to hear from the citizens, I need to hear, the people, remember, they're the ones that are directly affected, and anything by right, as you know, I'm never a supporter of that. So I think that, and I haven't ever agreed with these two, so I think it's a benchmark that, that I think that their ideas of having, you know, a listening session and figuring out what people want and how this is going to work is a, is a very good idea. We don't need to do anything tonight.
No, 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 no. This is, this is the very initial, let's have the conversation.
I'm trying to get a sense about, are we, you know, Kathy's trying to get some ideas out there that she's heard, that Mark Grills has heard, that we've heard through the partnership from our meetings when we did do the amendment last time, and we did have a meeting, and we did have listening sessions with the business community and others. So we have, we've, we've had some background in this, this isn't, this isn't all new, I don't think, but Kathy's just trying to frame some ideas, see if anything sticks to the wall, we're hearing these things, if they're all bad ideas and we like the bylaw the way it is, there won't be any amendments, there won't be any amendments, so. But I want to ask Peter and Ken if any, any comments with regard to the process, a good, good discussion on this, you're absolutely right.
So we traded an email today, Kathy, so the number of units that potentially under the current bylaw now, we could have as many as 400 or so, is that what we?
I think when we were looking at the hotels on Route 28 and did the 15%, it was like 450.
Right.
That, that would be like if everybody on Route 28 did 15%.
Just 28.
Just 28.
We have about 120 now, our workforce housing rooms, right around there?
Right, we have the 24 rooms at Parker's River Resort, 72 at Town and Country, and I think Mark indicated that there's about 25 from the annual permits that he issues.
Are there any issues so far with policing any of those 120 that we know of, any problems that have come out of such a small?
Mark's shaking his head no, and again, these are all on Route 28.
We're not currently in four, is there a 24 to 30 hour requirement now for Yarmouth?
Right now, it's, you need to, if to be a seasonal employee, you have to work at least a minimum of 24 hours a week for a Yarmouth business.
And that's in place now?
Yes.
And how is that managed? It's not managed. Let's be real here, that, that number four is not even worth having on there, to be very candid with you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but it just, it bothers me that it's even there, because there's no way to manage it. You know, I've been on both sides of this issue, I ran hotels in the town of Yarmouth for 30 years, we wouldn't, this issue wouldn't keep coming up if there wasn't a housing issue with our workforce housing. Let's just, let's just be real, by right, I have a huge issue with that. I do think that we need to take a look at it from a special permit standpoint, and I'm not, at this point, I'm not willing to move on that, but the bottom line is, is that if this issue didn't keep coming up, it keeps coming up because there's a problem, and it's as simple as that. There's simple economics to this, you're not, if your hotel room is making money renting it to somebody coming down from Lexington, Mass, you're not going to give up a hotel room to have one of your staff members in it. You know, if you're getting three, four, five, six, 700 bucks a night, you're not going to have somebody in there paying you something a week, whatever that number is, to stay in a hotel room. So there's an economic side to it, that part of it right there, the other issue is hotel rooms that are being given up are economically have issues, it's just where it comes down to. But I totally agree with the rest of the board, that I want to hear more from the public, I want to hear more, I have no problem, I'd love to hear what the Chamber has to say, as Peter said, I'd love to hear what the police department has to say, and then finally, I do want to hear input from the ZBA, because, you know, we're not trying to pass the buck to them to have everything fall on their shoulder, but this issue would not keep coming back to us if we didn't have an issue in this town, that needs to be addressed.
All right.
These are my apple pie.
Any other, any other comments? So I think the next step for this would be, you know, when we do meet with the, with the ZBA, maybe we ask the partnership to come in and talk to us, haul them in. I mean, that's where this is coming from, Mark and Kathy get phone calls from the Chamber, the partnership group, Jamie Viera, who's, who did sponsor the prior change to this particular zoning bylaw, and they were very helpful in terms of their support, and I think it, that that is working, but we're finding from ZBA hearings and from the public that some things aren't working so well. And I know there are members of the public here tonight who would like to share with us some of their experiences, and we welcome that, and we thank you for coming tonight, sorry to have you be waiting so long, but we're trying to stick to our agenda, so it's okay with the board, maybe we can ask some of the members of the public to share their comments. You come up to the microphones, introduce yourself, and where you, where you live.
Madam Chairman, I have to leave at 7:00.
I know, I know, I know, sorry.
It's okay.
Hi, I'm Ellen Pace, and I reside at 19 Seaside Village Road, I'm directly across from the Village Green motel.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your name?
Ellen Pace, P-A-C-E, 19 Seaside Village Road. One of the things we wanted to point out, that maybe you would want to consider with all the other things that were outlined in the memo, is what appears to be a bit of a discrepancy that's been used recently between the definition of transient and what we feel is the very clear and very instructive 404.5 seasonal employee housing bylaw. There have been three hearings within the past year before the ZBA, three different hotels, two of which you mentioned, the Parker River Resort, Town and Country, and then last November, there was the hearing on the Village Green motel. And in each one of those instances, the transcript and the testimony on YouTube will show that the parties making the application for the variance before the ZBA were advised by the building department that they had to go before the ZBA, because they were, they were asking for a variance from one of the 12.
Special permit?
Yes, a special permit, because they were asking for a variance from the 12 requirements in 404.5. Most recently, the Village Green is now full of seasonal employees again, at this moment, as we speak. They did not have to go before the ZBA, they were granted their permit, even though they have exceeded 15% based on the definition of transient, because what they do is they're moving, they're playing musical chairs with the occupants and moving them from room to room every 30 days. So that has not come before the ZBA, like the other did, others did last year. So I think that's, that's something that this board might want to consider as well, because that's, it's not consistent, it's a clear discrepancy, and I think it's something that they should be concerned about, because like I said, right now, they're moving in mattresses, the Red Jacket is coming and going and picking them up, it's full of people, and this has not gone before the ZBA. They have not issued a special permit for those people to be there right now.
Yes.
Hi, I'm Donna Zaloskis, I'm a full-time resident here in Yarmouth for 12 years, love it, and I live at 7 Southwest Drive, I'm in Abutter. In using the transient definition, it says for not, to move the employees every 30 days, okay, so with, so they say, and as you brought up, who's policing that? And for an aggregate of 90 days. However, they're really there for seven months. So it shouldn't be used as a loophole in the bylaws, and we've gone before the building commissioner, bringing this to his attention, and he said, I'm just going by the definition of the bylaws, and continues to use this transient for the Village Green. And we're just perplexed.
Using it inconsistently, though, and there have been instances where these motel owners have been advised that because you're seeking a variance, you must go before the ZBA, and in this instance, most recently, they were told, nope, the definition of transient will do it for you, you don't have to go before the ZBA.
There is no website for the Village Green, there is a no vacancy sign on their hotel sign. Yesterday, when I was walking by the hotel, there was a truck, it was a Cape Cod Firewood truck, unloading bags of linen, multiple bags of linen, but the hotel isn't open. We've called the number they provide, it says, this is Howard, leave a message. So it's very frustrating to us as neighbors who led a big opposition last year to the ZBA, and the ZBA agreed, so Jack Hines finally withdrew without prejudice. Jack Hines still owns the hotel, but once again, is doing what he wants.
And it was, I would say, you know, not to get too deeply into this one instance, because I know this is about a bigger, this is a bigger conversation, but there was extensive outreach by representatives of Jack Hines to the neighbors, the four of us, to get us to agree to seasonal housing this summer. In exchange, they said they would promise to make it, to purchase it from Jack Hines and make it a nice motel, but we had to agree to the seasonal housing for that to happen. We obviously said we disagreed with the seasonal housing, we'd love to see a renovated motel there, nobody would love that more than the surrounding neighborhood, but that we had issues with the seasonal housing. And like she said, Jack Hines still owns it, it was never sold, as we were told, this is clearly not going to take place. We were told that if Jack Hines ran it as a motel, there would be tents in the parking lot and on the street implying that it would be of very poor quality and no good for the motel, and that we would be much better served to agree with them and lend our support to seasonal housing this season. And when that didn't happen, they were able to get in there with the definition of transient versus going before the ZBA as they should have.
Thank you, we appreciate your comments, any questions from the members of the board or comments, okay, thank you, we appreciate coming in tonight.
Thank you for hearing us, we appreciate it.
Yeah, we have some others, we're going to.
I'm sorry, I'm not leaving because I don't want to hear you, but I, I do have to leave at 7 o'clock, so I.
I know, I have a plate.
I'll hear this, okay.
Cape Plate House, I'm probably late.
Oh, okay, we'll get you there, we'll get you there by 8:00.
Gail Ladani, 59 Parkwood Road. So just to add to what they were saying, Ellen and Donna, to be clear, they are running it 100% of their rooms, they are using 100% of their rooms for seasonal housing. There is no guests there, there's no renters, there's no vacationers, and when we, you know, approached Mr. Grills and said, what's going on here, how is this happening again? How is this happening again? When we went before the ZBA, the ZBA was vehemently against it and said, listen, you know, you didn't apply for a permit, you rented, he, they spoke to Jack Hines and said, you rented it to, or leased it to the Red Jacket, and the Red Jacket put all their employees in there. It was a, like a frat house, it was terrible. We had no idea, the neighborhood, we didn't know what was going on, and so for, what we want to stress is that this isn't a not-in-my-backyard thing. We understand, you know, seasonal employee housing, that there is a need for it, and that they deserve better, these workers deserve better than what they're getting at the Village Green, number one, it's rundown, it's disgusting, the rooms, there's, there's shingles hanging, there's gutters falling off, it's awful, and it's in a beautiful residential neighborhood. And I think what we've always said is, you know, how would you like this, you know, you know, there's only one street that we can walk down to get to the beach, several streets that have to walk by that motel. There were drug deals going on, this is not an exaggeration, there were Uber drivers delivering marijuana, which is legal, I guess, there were parties, these kids, these workers, they're not, they should not be treated like caged animals. We're not saying, listen, you stay in your room, you don't go out, that's not fair, they've worked hard all day, they want to socialize. There's 80 of them, 80, you know, young adults, having their friends come over, it changed the whole atmosphere, the whole vibe, I was afraid to take my grandchildren down to the beach because of the element that was there. Now, are there seasonal workers that, you know, work hard and they are respectful? Yes, but when you turn something into 100% of the rooms that you have into seasonal employee housing with no permit, nothing, and just do whatever you want, we fought this last year, and we thought we successfully fought it, we thought we won, we were thrilled, and then we thought, hmm, wait a minute, dismissed without prejudice, they can come back. Now, what Jack Hines did was, he didn't come back, he said, how am I going to do this without having to go before the board? Oh, I see a transient, I'm going to go through the transient bylaw that says, I can do whatever I want, I don't have to do the 15%, so what we're saying is a neighborhood of these bylaws have to change, they have to be more strict, they have to say, 15% seasonal housing, why do we have that in the first place? Why do we have that if you can just go through the transient and do whatever you want anyway? Mr. Grills feels like his hands are tied because he's reading that transient definition and saying, yeah, they can do it, yeah, go ahead. That's wrong, and that is not in the spirit that the bylaw was developed. We know it, you know it, they know it, and yet, they are able to do it. So I ask you, what is the point of having a 15% seasonal housing? Why does anyone come before the board, why did, why did they come on 28, Mr. Marama? Why did he come before and say, I want, I would like to have 50%, may I please? And they said, yes, you may. Well, he didn't need to, he could have just used the transient and did whatever he wanted. It has to stop, there has to be better, you know, stricter bylaws that state, something in the 15% has to say, and you shall not use the transient language to circumvent, get around, do what you want, I don't know, the. I don't know the legal, what you would legally need to say. That loophole has to be closed, because, and we were told by Mr. Grills, and he's here, it, they do it all the time. It's happening everywhere. It's not just the Village Green. They do it everywhere. We'll do something about it. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
I'm very passionate.
Do not apologize.
I mean, we've been through a lot.
We had, we had, 20 years ago, we had a similar problem with the weekly rentals in a lot of these motels. And I remember it well, because I was in the hotel business back then, and...
Yeah.
A lot of it came down to the definition, definition of transient, were they paying rooms tax, were they registered guests, do they maintain a registration log for each person if they're moving them after 30, 60, 90 days? And the health department played a big role in that as well, because I think they're also a licensing authority for, for a lodging license. So I'm not sure if, if, if the health department is somebody else that can...
Well, we've gone to the board of health, we, you know, we've gone everywhere. And we are appealing Mr. Grills' decision to allow the Village Green to run 100% every room, seasonal housing, under the transient definition. We are appealing that. We will be going before the ZBA to appeal that decision. But other than that, I think that at the planning board, this is, this is a perfect opportunity to say, "Okay, you know, let's do something about this. Let's keep it on 28. Monitor it, take care of it." You know, there's plenty of rundown motels that need, you know, that can be revitalized and used for 100% seasonal. The Pelham House in Dennis, they did a fabulous job. Fabulous. And they put their employees in beautiful, brand-new, they monitor it, they make sure that they are, if they have one infraction, they're out. They lose their job. It can be done, but it has to be done outside of a residential area, and it has to be strict enough and have teeth and have penalties if someone like Jack Hines is going to go right around and, and say, "Oh, I got a slap on the wrist, so what?" There has, there has to be teeth to this. There has to be imposable fines. In a perfect world, that's what I'd like, you know?
Thank you.
But that's, that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you very much. We appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you, and thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Been dying to talk to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Dick Martin, and I know a lot of the neighbors here, and I've been involved in sales and, and so forth, and of course, I'm on the board of appeals, so. I, I would just like to pretty much reiterate what was said. There's a catch-22 problem here, relevant to the definitions and the definition of transient. What the planning board has put together in terms of the employee, you know, the workforce housing bylaw is fine. It, it works fine under every other circumstance. 15% makes logical sense for a motel, you know, to have some rooms for the employees and, and to run as a motel, with an office, with a website, with a telephone number, with guests going in and out. This isn't what this is happening at, at the Village Green motel, unfortunately. It's just a great big group rental. And it's like a, it's not fair to the neighborhood. It's, it's a get-around, and it's not, not the building commissioner's fault, he's, his hands are tied based on the, the language. And what we need to see is some language improvement, one way or another, that covers this, so this is not a loophole available to every motel, for that matter, where they can, where they can put 100% group rental in for an entire summer, just by saying they're moving them around, which they probably won't do anyways. You know, other, the other motels have come to us on Route 28, and first of all, a whole different neighborhood. This is a residential neighborhood where the Village Green is, a very nice one, near the beach, and surrounded by, surrounded by homes, and it was residential zone before it became HMD2. So it's certainly a lot different than where relief has been given on Route 28 to other motels that are in a strict business area. And those motels have, you know, managers that are there and watching the thing, and curfews, and, and, and have to come back for reviews, and so forth and so on. So they've gone through the process, as you people developed it, so that it's done and done right. And so, just one way or another, language-wise, or somehow or another, the, the building department has to be given, the building commissioner has to be given some proper leeway so that the definitions can be done in a way so that we don't find this happening, and it's not going to necessarily happen just at the Village Green. They're going to potentially get around the board of appeals and every, every motel, every old motel that they want to make into a group rental. And that's what we're looking at here, and it needs to be dealt with one way or another.
Thank you, Dick. Thank you, Mr. Martin. We appreciate it.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Saban.
While the building inspector happens to be here, I'd like to make use of his time, if he doesn't mind. I took the liberty of looking at the definition of transient while we're having this discussion. And it says here, "Use of a guest unit as a residence or dwelling unit shall not be considered transient." So, how can we change that to make it more effective? I mean, to me...
I'm thinking that's you experts.
That's why I ask. Hi, Mark.
Hi, how are you? Mark Grills, building commissioner, madam chair, members of the board. The transient definition very clearly says that the definition does not apply. Where, where use of a guest reunit as a residence. So if the owner of the motel claims that they're moving their staff around, they're meeting the definition of transient by being in the building, being in that room for less than 30 days. The building code says the same exact thing regarding a transient. If you, I don't know if you can exclude a specific group of people in the definition of transient, but that's something the town council should look into.
So that's, that's a stumbling block for the building department.
Well, that's, that's our issue. We can't enforce it. You know, we can enforce transient, and even then, I think there's case law as recently as three or four years ago that says we can't even pull guest registers anymore. You would know that.
Yeah. Only the police department with a warrant.
Nobody can pull it, not even the police.
Only the police with a warrant can pull a guest register out.
Yes. Yeah, and I've been to the courts, and they will not even give me an administrative warrant to go, "I've been there." They refuse to even talk to me.
Right.
So there's a loophole that's been exploited.
And do you, do you, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, the definition of transient is, are the handcuffs on you?
Correct.
As long as the, as long as that guest is being moved every 29 days.
Correct.
And you can't even test it?
Yeah, I can't even check.
So once again, we have, we have a bylaw that's almost done.
I mean, if I showed up and asked most of the motel owners, they'd be, they would probably let me see the guest register.
But you don't have any right to it right now.
They don't have to.
No, they could say no. So you have no right to that right now. So there's a loophole that's, there's a bylaw that almost doesn't enforce it.
Well, this is a definition, and Mass. General Law also has a definition of transient, so there's a lot of definitions that you need to refer to when you're considering changing this, and I think that the exclusion of any particular group of people or type of people may be an issue.
Yeah, I don't think legally we could exclude a type of people.
Well, I think you could say, in a bylaw, you could say, "For the purposes of this bylaw, only the definition of, of occupant or whatever the other, the other..."
Seasonal employee housing. So the seasonal employee housing allows them to stay in the same room for seven months. The transient, they're still considered a motel room, and they can, we can, they can pay their tax on those rooms.
Right, that's another thing, you can get the money out of it.
But you guys are looking at fees or something as part of this bylaw.
So I'm hearing the suggestion from the building commissioners that we might want to consult town council on the language for transient.
The definitions...
Yeah, Kathy's really good at that, so...
Granted, okay.
And where they apply.
It's tricky. It's very tricky.
Definitions might be fine, it's where they're applying to, where they're in conflict with each other and using one when they should be using the other. Because maybe both definitions can stay.
Town council might have some advice on how to create, how to utilize the seasonal employee housing section of the bylaw and not refer to transient. I don't, I mean, there's got to be a way to figure it out, but that's for people at a higher pay grade.
Is there a restaurant there? How are they, are they cooking, or?
No, it's, no, no.
That's technically one of the variances, along with the exceeding 15% that should have had them in front of the ZBA, just like the Town and Country.
No one can hear her. No one can hear. We can't, the pub, the public can't hear you. If you want to make a comment, please come to the microphone. Yeah, because the public, listening and the recording, we won't be able to hear you.
Yeah, I was just going to say, that's, that's one of the, the variances, they don't have kitchen facilities. And it's, you know, along with exceeding 15% that, you know, is very clearly stated in the by, the seasonal employee bylaw, that should bring them before the ZBA, just like they were advised, to, you know, Parker River Resort, Town and Country was advised, you know, and Village Green did last year. They just, Village Green, you know, the, the ZBA was, was very direct with them in November of last year about the fact that it would never, ever happen. They would never get their approval at that location. So it's very clear, you know, why they didn't want to go before them. But there were exceptions to the seasonal employee, you know, housing bylaw that they were, you know, they should have been seeking a special permit for. And, you know, they didn't have to because of this transient definition.
Thank you. Yes, certainly.
In the seasonal, the 404.5 bylaws, it says that, that the seasonal employees need someplace to cook. How some of the hotels, the Red Jacket has been sending letters to the ZBA during their review, saying that "We will feed them three meals a day." Well, my husband and I volunteer at the Yarmouth Food Pantry, and every summer, we're inundated with seasonal housing, Flatul Park, Red Jacket. And I'm sorry, but that's taking food away from our full-time seasonal residents that need food.
Okay. Thank you. Other issue?
You guys down with me? I'm here for the accessory dwelling units, actually, so.
Okay, any, Kathy?
I'm not feeling well, so if we could move the meeting.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I have a migraine.
I have a migraine. Okay. Accessory apartments. We have our meeting coming up Monday. We have meeting minutes. May I have a motion to accept the meeting, meeting minutes of May 17?
So moved.
Second.
Susan Britta.
Aye.
Chris Vincent. Peter Slovac.
Aye.
Jim Saban.
Aye.
Ken Smith.
Aye.
Joanne Crowley, aye. May I have a motion to accept the BOS meeting notes of June 6?
So moved.
Second.
Susan Britta.
Aye.
Will Rubenstein. Chris Vincent. Peter Slovac.
Aye.
Jim Saban.
Aye.
Ken Smith.
Aye.